Thank you. You didn't notice the interaction.
Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Here.
Commissioner Valgler?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. Row officer reports and comments looking out in the audience today. We have no row officers or representatives thereof. Public comments, any member of the public wish to make any comments?
George, what Morgan will do next, he'll ask you to recite the Gettysburg Address.
I was thinking about asking the ladies some prayers.
You guys are caring.
Tough crowd.
Can you do the Gettysburg? That would be spectacular.
I know, it's great.
You do? Well.
I'm not volunteering here.
Where's going for it?
It's fine, it's like, yeah.
See, it didn't seem like it. Opposition, open and creating.
I started something. I think you might have very good overall.
I think I learned it in fourth, fifth grade.
I forgot.
It was the beginning of my promise.
That was the album.
There were no comments where he fits, there were no amendments, there were no proposals, there were no seat of his proposals. We have a warrant register for January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check that over before making the motion to accept warrant register.
Send them.
With in just a second.
I will second.
Motion second, for a discussion here, non-questional motion on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Up next, we have the minutes from Tuesday, January thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, last meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. And I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes. We're making changes as necessary and expedient.
Rebecca had so much fun last week, she's.
Back again, yeah. It happens. It happens.
I also had so much fun, but I'm back.
Yes.
That, you know, legal requirement.
Oh my goodness. I haven't looked to accept the minutes as well.
Second with a very minor correction.
Who got?
I just, I just happened to catch it by luck. On the very last page, under public comments, that should read Kenny Rice, not Kenny Kreis. Remove the P.
Yep.
They got, they got it right up at the beginning, under the list of people attending.
Just do a little scrubbers there. All right, with that changed, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion here, non-questional motion on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have one written communication from CSE Environmental for Health and Safety, Dint's Haven Castle Builders, MPDES permit renewal in the city of Newcastle. That's their facility located on, I believe, Reagan Street. Yeah, they're just applying for a routine MPDES renewal. We see these damn near every, every meeting. So I'll take a motion to accept and file that.
Send them.
I will second.
Motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Staff reports, do we remember a staff and anything to report about beyond what's already on the agenda? Commissioner reports and comments, Dan, you're on deck.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyd, it's nice to see Mr. Johnson here today. It's interesting because if I recall, last week, we had a Shenango Township Supervisor here. So today, we have a Slippery Rock Township Supervisor. So welcome, George.
Yes.
Thank you.
That's all I have is from.
Thank you. Laura?
I just want to comment on the East Palestine incident with the train derailment. To just reassure our Lawrence County residents that our emergency services public safety director, Chad Struble, was on top of everything happening and going on, in contact with the authorities in all of the different municipalities, the counties here and across the border in Ohio to keep us up to date. And we have, as commissioners, been well informed of everything that was happening and going on. And pleased to say that we did not have to be evacuated or, you know, sheltering in place, any of those instances. If that would have happened, I am sure that, again, our public safety director, Chad Struble, would have indicated that to us and taken care of the proper procedures to follow and then making sure that everybody knew what they needed to do. So just wanted to comment on that job. Well done, although none of our services were needed and we did not have to activate any emergency protocols. But just to reassure our residents that we were on top of it and our public safety department was on top of it as well.
I'm gonna say a little bit more bluntly, there is no evacuation right now in Lawrence County.
Stop calling that.
Please.
And to say that it was a well-executed burn that they did, or the release of the chemicals that they did, everything went as planned. And that was good, because there could have been some, some ill effects of that as well, but everything went as planned and that's almost a good thing.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
I really have nothing. Do resolutions. First phones up, Becky, I'm assuming you're here for the stabbage.
Yeah. Oh, yes. Okay. Yeah, so last week, I believe, we opened bids and we're about to award the lowest, most, most bidder for the storm damage work that stabbaged by the trail.
This will come out of our Marcellus legacy account, which is the account we traditionally use to maintain these parks. And again, I'm hopeful that these will be unnecessary in the future as we all onboard that parks manager position.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful. Beautiful. So yeah, right there, so this debt cost of, what, six thousand bucks to the county, six thousand twenty bucks to the county. So yeah, thank you, Joe, and planning for pullers together. Make this. I really hope the next resolution's coming out of a grant. I'll take a, I'll take motion on fifty.
Send them.
Second, motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Valgler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, fifty-one, please tell me this is coming out of a grant.
This is the grant that for the completion, well, continuation of the Quaker Falls DCNR grant. We had to assign a design consultant and engineer for us to move forward with the plans and specs for what we plan to do there.
So this is coming out of the C two P two grant, this fifty-seven thousand?
Yes.
Okay. That makes me vote yes for it. Questions, comments?
Yeah, thank you. What are the next steps?
Well, yeah, first, we have to submit this to the state, let us know, let them know that who we are is. And from there, we start with this, with the drawings, and then we have to complete a very detailed bid packet. So we will be setting up for bid once again as to what the plans are and prices coming in as far as what.
And what will those plans be? What will change at the park?
What our plans hopefully are is a new pavilion, two overlooks. And also, you know, that all has to be ADA accessible. Both overlooks as far as, and as well as the pavilion. So anything that will, you know, adhere to that and then uplet to it, all has to be ADA.
Are the fencing safety measures that we put in, like, are, as best we can, are we up to speed as far as those are?
Yeah, yeah, everything has been complete on both of those, the gorge one and also on the pedestrian bridge itself. So everything is right where people pre-comp wants us, you know, so.
And I just think we remind folks, just be very cautious out there. It's a very steep drop.
Oh, yes.
You know, and I don't mean to talk about Mr. Johnson again, but he knows full well about steep drops out of McConnell's State Park.
That's true.
We're talking about the Quaker Falls park that the county owns out in Mahoning Township. That's, that's somewhat of a gorge also.
Right.
So we've, we've put some protective fencing up, keep people from slipping accidentally and getting too close and falling down. But I know you, you know all too well how frequently that happens out at the state park. I'm sure you get called there quite often. But thank you very much.
Laura?
Okay.
Take a motion on fifty-one.
Send them.
Second.
Motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Valgler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thanks, thank you. I can take this last one if you want, if you want to.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, this is, we just, we made a slight error last week. The New Wilmington contract should have gone to the New Wilmington EDC, their Economic Development Corporation.
Instead of the borough.
Instead of the borough itself. So we're just amending that language.
Yeah, it's fine with me.
Take a motion on fifty-two.
Send them.
Second. Motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Valgler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes. Thank you. This next resolution is amending our employee handbook regarding a work from home policy. The policy explicitly prohibits work from home unless approved. I did, but I have read it. Unless approved by the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. I will note that for both the row, for the row officers and the courts, they still have to receive approval from the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners in order to, to work from home. But otherwise, work from home is now prohibited at Lawrence County government. Questions or comments on that? We, the purpose for this is, since COVID, we've been a little bit lax in what we've allowed to occur in terms of work schedules. We've had some employees working from home without notifying the appropriate chain of command. We've had other employees selectively take off to go work from home. This, this effectively eliminates, it does eliminate work from home unless an employee, and again, that employee could be reported to row officers, court administration, or commission, if it's any employee that works for Lawrence County government, unless they, they request it and the commissioners approve their work from home. So I'll take a motion on fifty-three, unless there's any questions or problems.
Send them.
Second.
Motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-question on the motion, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Valgler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Fifty-four. This is CYS Northwest Media. This is a massive amount for this agency, three thousand seven hundred bucks. I think we spent that last hour.
And it's just a case, right? There you go.
You're welcome. So what do we have going on with, with, with Northwest Media, and then I'll let you guys jump right into diversified treatment alternative centers. And we'll take them both together unless anyone has objection to that.
Spend that at Starbucks in about six months.
I actually probably do. That's probably close to what my expenditure is.
Good morning, everyone.
Good mornings.
So I did some bullet points for you guys. Northwest Media is our foster parent college that our new kinship and foster homes go through as part of their training requirements for certification. In the past year, ninety-two people were trained. That was three hundred and eighty-nine sessions, totaling a thousand twenty-eight hours completed. We received a ninety-one point seven percent satisfaction rate from the foster and kinship families. Core training list, so these are the list of trainings that we, that the foster and kinship parents must have at the beginning before certification. Working with birth parents, child welfare team, supporting normals, normalcy, trauma-informed parenting, understanding behavior in foster children, working with primary families, child safety and supervision, grief and loss in the care system, and non-compliance and defiance. Those are the core trainings that they must go through before they're certified. County cost is three thousand seven hundred and fifty. When you break that down, it's forty point seventy-six per person at three dollars and sixty-eight cents per training hour.
Questions or comments on that?
No, I appreciate your thoroughness. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just for the viewing audience, Bill Blow's supervisor.
Of foster and kinship.
Foster and kinship program and get children when you services.
Yes. And then Mike, I assume you're here for diversified treatment alternatives?
Yeah, it won't be that long.
Take it away.
Again, this is a backup provider. They provide services for children with mental health issues. You know, projecting them, but we just had this in the back.
I'm sure. Great thing. I see they're out in Milton, Pennsylvania, which is where, at least at one time, and they may still do. They used to make Chef Boyardee out of Milton, Pennsylvania, the cam spaghetti.
I got through college with that.
Did you?
Yeah.
That's crazy. I don't know if they still make it.
I don't know.
I'm looking at the.
That and tacos, that's, that's what I said by.
What was the second name?
Tacos.
Tacos, yeah.
Like oodles and noodles?
No, I skipped out on the, on the oodles and noodles. I've eaten, don't get me wrong, I think everyone asked, but. No, I, I shifted over to Chef Boyardee.
That was my college, oodles and noodles.
That was the Chef Boyardee. You do what you can to get stuff in this case, right? Or club the hand over. I'll do, I'll take a motion on fifty-four or fifty-five.
Send them.
Second, motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Valgler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. These guys actually reminded me.
Thank you guys.
Yep.
Last year, we had Director Baut in here to do an extensive recap of CYS activities. I thought that was beneficial, it was beneficial to me, and I know it was also very beneficial to the public. I know that the department has made great strides, even since the last time Director Baut was. But then our number of kids in care are way down. We've improved safety measures. Our caseworker retention is improving. It might be helpful to have Director Baut in here again, just for another one of those, those comprehensive presentations. So if either of you object, I might reach out to him. Maybe, maybe not next week. I feel like Valentine stays an appropriate time for that. But maybe, maybe the week after you'll have, you'll have John come in and it's a good idea. Uh.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Up next, and this one's gonna break the bank too. Human Resources, forty dollars and fifty cents of that contingency to, to the consideration dues for our registered reporter notary information. So I'll take a, I'll take a motion on that.
Send them.
Second. Motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-question on the motion, on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, Commissioner's meeting will be held Tuesday, Valentine's Day, on ten AM at Commissioner's Meeting Room. There will be an opioid advisory board meeting today at noon in this room. Actually, was with a, one of the, one of the chiefs of police of the county last night. And he inquired, which I was happy to, happy to hear that they were inquiring about some funding for some technology upgrades in their police cars. Then so, after I got Joe on the phone at nine-thirty at night, and I appreciate you answering, we figured out what the procedure was for that. And I think that that.
We made it as simple as we can.
That's the part. And it's kind of simple, but.
It's better, yes.
And so I, I think you'll see an application, but I'm, I'm just, I was happy to hear that the police department was, was looking for sources of funds and, and, you know, looking to potentially tap into our opioid allocation. There'll be a planning commission meeting on Wednesday, February eighth, at twelve o'clock noon, best for Borough Building. And there will be a prison board meeting on Wednesday, February fifteenth, at twelve o'clock noon, in the Commissioner's Meeting Room. Am I missing anything?
That's it.
I think that's it.
We're, we're, we're closed on the twentieth.
Oh.
President's Day.
President's Day.
One day, the twentieth.
Yes.
Do I have that right, the twentieth? Yes.
All right. Any additional public comments? See, not George, I hope you enjoy the show.
Yes.
Any additional comments?
Sonny will be here next week.
George, I'll, I'll, I'll say this, and out of respect for the chairman, Boyd, you know, I, I held the position of chairman for a number of years. And you can see how efficiently these meetings are run. If I were chairing it, we'd be halfway through. No, this, this is, we're generally out of here in about a half an hour, give or take, depends on how much is on the agenda, but it's, you know, he keeps them moving.
My record's five minutes.
Yes.
I don't think I'm gonna beat that one. But thanks, Dan.
Sure.
All right, I will adjourn the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners.
Debbie, I have, if you'd like to pack it. Oh my.
Good to go. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good day. Let's do it. I will call to order this January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, meeting of Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. All please rise for the flag, please, followed by a brief moment of silence. Kenny, would you lead us in the platoon?
Flag deleted. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, in the soul, with liberty and justice for all.
And all please remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. All right, Vanessa, please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Here.
Commissioner Valgler?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Here. Row officer comments and reports, looking out in the audience today, I see one row officer wins today, our controller pressed to find. Dave, do you have anything for us about what's already on the agenda?
I do not.
Beautiful. Public comments, is there any member of the public here wishing to make comment for the board? Seeing none? Fiscal and contractual, we've got a couple repository properties up on the slate. First one is approved, or at least has been approved by prior governing boards, that is the school district of the city of Newcastle and city council of Newcastle. It is a resolution for discussion plus approval for repository property twenty-five dash nine oh oh seven five two, located at one fifty-seven Caf, I guess, the Shannick Township.
Yeah.
The Shannick Township. I usually see Thomas Casey on the west side, which is why I jumped to, jumped to Newcastle. But this has been approved by the board of supervisors. Vanessa, is it, I assume that it has been approved or not acted on by the school district?
It was. It must not have been acted on, yeah.
Well, in fairness to Shannick, I think that's all four repository properties, so they're probably not used to, not used to getting, the school district's probably not used to getting these requests. But we'll make that resolution twenty twenty-three dash.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. Questions, comments on the resolution?
No.
I will take a motion to approve.
Send them.
Second. Motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-question on the motion, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Valgler?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next, we have three repository bids which have been rejected. They're all in the city of Newcastle. All note that even if this board takes action to approve them today, because one taxing body denied them, they will be denied, that being said, this board, unless there are extenuating circumstances. This board generally rules, if it's denied, we generally deny as well. And again, that being said, you know, we don't, we don't have to, we don't matter. So we'll make these thirty-nine, we'll take them together unless there's any objections to doing so. Forty and forty-one. And these are rejected by the city of Newcastle, all made by, we got one from Thomas Casey, two from Thomas Casey, and one from Tony Argero. Tori. Tori Argero. One property is located on Sampson Street, one property is located on Arabia Street, and one property is the First Merritt Building. Again, all of these are denied by the city. Thomas Casey owes back taxes. And in the case of delivering, the First Merritt Building, it is the last day, so those are the reasons. I'll take a motion to approve thirty-nine through forty-one, unless there are any questions or comments.
Send them.
Second, motion is second, is there any further discussion here, non, best please call a roll.
Commissioner Steelvogel?
No.
Commissioner Valgler?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We have no advertising for bids and proposals, although I do believe we'll have a couple things coming up for maintenance, pretty fast, simply relating to roof repairs. We do have the opening of bids and proposals, that's why our controllers with us today for the stabbage pipe trail. I'm hopeful this is the last time we'll have to open bids as it relates to park maintenance, again, we'll be awarding a parks manager position in quick. For that being said, Dave, welcome to the circus, as always. Happy to have you with us. If you'd be able to do the honors of ripping those, those folders up, sure thing. I have three bids, the first one I have here is from C Prunk Incorporated in Hubbard, Ohio. Total amount of bid, forty-one thousand twenty dollars. Next one is GP Construction Incorporated in Edenburg, Pennsylvania. Total amount of bid, forty-six thousand three hundred and twenty three dollars. And the final one is from North Beaver Contract in the Newcastle, Pennsylvania. Total amount of bid, forty-two thousand seven hundred and twelve dollars. Okay, questions or comments on any of those bids? As is customary, what we'll do next is we'll take a motion to table the bids and refer them to the appropriate administrative officials, in this case, the controller, the solicitor, and the Department of Planning for further review, and we'll take action on those bids at a later meeting. So I'll take a motion to table and refer to the appropriate administrative officials.
Send them.
Second, motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Dave, thanks very much.
Thank you.
We have three warrant registers today from January twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth, and twenty-fourth. One is just simply a list of checks or bills paid out by the, by the controller and treasurer that we have authorized over the last few weeks. And I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over to make sure that all are accurate, that all of our monies are accounted for, the public monies are accounted for. And I'll take a motion to approve, or to accept and file three warrant registers whenever you're ready.
Send them.
Second, motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. The minutes from Tuesday, January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. I'll give my colleagues a minute to check those over and take a motion to approve or make any changes as necessary and expedient. This was a big money meeting. We spent a significant amount of ARPA dollars, a significant amount of American Rescue Plan act dollars, a significant amount of paving dollars. It was a, and today's the day we actually do the contracting, it is associated with the authorization of those appropriations.
Send them.
Second, motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. We have one written communication, Dave, from North Memorial Animal Hospital in Wilmington Township. They are applying for a National Plague Discharge Elimination System, NPDES permit for their sewage. Any questions or comments on that?
No.
Here, I'll take a motion to accept and file correspondence.
Send them.
Second, motion secondly, for a discussion here, non-questional motion, on favor, please sit up by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Staff reports, do we remember a staff here that has anything to report about what's already on the agenda? They are approached the bench.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here's a copy of the report for the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The report has to do with the data update project that we, the previous board of commissioners signed in two thousand nineteen. Please announce that it has finally been completed in conjunction with evaluating services, technology, and vision government solutions. The project was signed in two thousand nineteen, like I said from the previous board of commissioners, in order to update all property characteristics throughout the county by the use of aerial imagery and open地看着. I want to stress, this was not a reassessment, but an update of just property data. We used the current valuation tables that were effective of our last annual evaluation assessment in two thousand and three. Wanted to just give the update, there were twenty-six thousand thirty-five parcels that would be viewed by not only vision and EST personnel, but also the county personnel. And out of that, seven hundred and twenty-nine of them still need to be site visited because the, there was obstruction from aerial imagery from other objects or from tree covers. Where when my staff is out in that district doing its normal routine building permits, they will visit these properties to pick up what is noted based off of this project. Just to recap, the cost of this project was one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'm happy to announce the total assessment increase from this project was sixty-one million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. That gives the county tax, unbudgeted county tax revenue of five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. So as you can see, it was a good return on the investment from county tax dollars.
No, that is budgeted now.
It is budgeted now.
It is budgeted now.
Well.
Don't get any ideas.
The last group as well, we sent out thirteen hundred change of assessment notices at the beginning of this month for the last group of changes that occurred at the end of the year. So that has not been budgeted. for the last group of, uh, changes that occurred at the end of the year, so that has not been budgeted yet.
Okay.
Did you have to tell them that?
I'll have those numbers to you at a future meeting. Uh, but I also want to stress one other thing. I want to be clear that not every person in the county received an increase in their assessment. There were over three thousand property owners that also received a decrease. So the assessment office's job is to, uh, make sure everyone's paying their fair share of taxes, that can be increased, decreased, or a status quo, status quo stays the same. So, just wanted to give that report. I am working on a district breakdown by municipality and school district that I have, I forward on to each of the respective districts, so may I are aware of how the project turned out for that?
Yeah, just a couple comments, we'll turn it over to my colleagues. Number one, the, the five hundred and ten thousand dollar, um, figure, that's only county tax revenue, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Which means, um, all of our school districts and all but one of our municipalities, uh, New Orleans Borough, it's not the property tax, is receiving, um, additional impact beyond just the county impact in terms of their, in terms of their bottom line. Um, number two, I was, I happen to be with the township supervisor, I met one of the supervisors for breakfast this morning, uh, up at Mama Jane's in the Shannick. And he actually commented that, that because of this, along with a couple of other, um, initiatives they, they've put into place in, uh, in his township, um, their revenue projections even beyond what they budgeted for in the most, in their most recent budget are already exceeding expectations, um, for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. And so that specific township and along with many others, um, are in, are in better fiscal health, um, because of this initiative. And lastly, I'll say, and just to tap on, tap on what you said, um, last, this is not about increasing or decreasing, uh, taxes, this isn't about us trying to go grab more revenue or lose more revenue or any of that. This is about making sure that everybody in Lawrence County is paying their fair share based on the taxing mechanisms that we have available towards the provision of government services. Um, that's the, that's the goal of your office, that's the goal of the three of us sitting up here, that's the goal of the Board of Assessment Appeals, is that, is, is not that people pay more or less in taxes, but that everybody pays their fair share and that's what this project, uh, helped to accomplish. My colleagues?
Yeah, agreed, they did, clarifying that it wasn't a reassessment and it was just, um, updating.
The only other comment that I would like to make is I do want to really put a shout out to the assessment office staff, they really went above and beyond the last three years with this project. We've gotten some phone calls from very angry property owners, but they have to kind of explain, but most of them seem to settle down, but every property owner did have their right to appeal to the increase, decrease, or whatever happened. But I do believe the office did go above and beyond, so I do want to give them a shout out.
Absolutely. And, and you made a good point, some properties actually decreased. Their taxes did decrease, let me, let me come in if they did file that appeal. I know, I, I got different phone calls, and again, once it's explained to them, that they, they do, uh, calm down. I hadn't gotten, I haven't gotten anything recent, so whatever, um, the word is, is getting out or has gotten out, it's, it's just not, it's not a reassessment, you do have an opportunity to, to appeal. Here, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of staff have anything to report about the author on the agenda? Seeing none. Uh, commissioner reports and comments, already here on deck, for his work.
I, I have nothing today, thank you.
Dan?
Likewise.
Uh, only thing I'll note is, uh, congratulations to you both for not having any responsibility over the elections for the next year. I am envious right now. Although I will have an announcement, uh, I'll, I'll be releasing, uh, what my intentions are on, uh, on Thursday. But, but for at least the next couple of days and, and potentially for the next at least couple of months, um, congratulations on insulting yourselves of that headache. And best of luck to you both.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Um, all right, moving on to the, uh, resolution portion, we have...
Do we, Dave, do we maybe need to clarify that? I mean, I don't know how many people are viewing, but the fact that Dan and I, we've both, uh, indicated that we are running for reelection, since we are members of the, um, the election board, where we can no longer participate in that and we are no longer members of the election board. So what happens in that instance then is the judge appoints two additional members, two members to replace us, um, of like party. Um, and so those replacements has been made, the order has been put out, so Dan and I no longer sit, or can sit on the election boards. Right now Morgan is still, still sitting and, uh, like you said, for however long amount of time, he will be there. Do it right. We'll be watching. Go ahead, dude.
I was joking with, with Tim Germaine that, you know, I'm not even allowed to speak anymore. Walked right past him in the hallway. Didn't say hello. But no, we do, we do have, that's a joke, but we do have to keep
Yes.
our relationship with that office now at arm's length.
Yes.
And, uh, that's, that's a good law, it's a very good law. So enjoy your service with Mr. McCary and Attorney Seltzer.
Yes.
I have a feeling the meetings are going to be live with him.
Right.
Um, but on that note, move into the new, uh, the new resolution portion of the circus. Uh, first up, we have our, our taxpayer director, Tish Foster, for a resolution discussion. I entered into agreement with, uh, InfoCon Tish, approach the bench. How you doing there?
Good.
What do we have before us?
Well, basically, we just want to be able to have the authoritarian information that's done through InfoCon, um, on our computer, so that we can access that data for our tax sales. Um, we've been, you know, we have some areas where, you know, maybe someone didn't get noticed assured or the address didn't get updated, because we don't have access to all that information, so it'll make it easier for us, um, to do that if we're able to do that. Sure, that's our goal.
Questions, comments?
Is the authoritarian aware that you're bringing this to our attention?
Yes, our solicitor contacted the authoritarian to give her approval first.
Great.
And then the next step was to bring it to the meeting.
Thank you.
Very good.
No, this is a, a cost of about five hundred, it is five hundred and seventy-six bucks total for forty-eight dollars a month. Um, and about, again, the hope is this increases the efficiencies of tax, of the tax payment office and allows for more efficient administration of our, our tax sales and our cost per sales. So, thank you. I'll take a motion on forty-two.
Send it.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion here and none question on the motion, uh, Vanessa, please call the board.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, El Cap's Vanessa? We've got a, uh, uh, resolution, uh, for our contribution to the senior citizen nutritional shopping program amount of five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, we've done this every year, but it's certainly always good to see it. If you'd be able to give us a refresher on what taxpayers are paying for.
Absolutely. Uh, so we're here today to ask for five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars to supplement the senior nutritional shopping program. Um, these are trips provided on the ax, uh, service to Lawrence County, um, residents who are sixty-five or older. Uh, they can travel for just one dollar to go to the grocery store, farmer's market, or food pantry. That was something that came up through COVID and we, we added that knowing that you all would be, probably should have asked now that I'm saying that loud, but I know you would have been supportive of that, um, of that. But anyway, um, roughly, uh, the average, uh, amount per trip that the county would pay is less than two dollars per trip. That allows our seniors to go for just one dollar, with the PennDOT lottery program paying eighty-five percent of that fare. Um, it enables people to have access to groceries more frequently, it's not cost prohibitive, um, especially things like fresh fruit, bread, and things like that. You can't just buy once per month and have all month. So, um, also with our same-day trip program, we're finding that, um, our seniors are really, um, using the same-day trip programs in addition with the senior nutritional program in order to go out and get, you know, groceries as they're getting low and, and just having more flexibility and access to our community, so it's been great.
Yeah, it's a good program. Um, as you, uh, you mentioned, you're projecting two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five acres to be provided to senior citizens, um, which is excellent. And, uh, you know, I, I'm certainly in favor, but I'm, I'm sure that the vote will reflect the board's,
Absolutely.
uh, positive opinion for the program. Uh, any questions or comments for, uh, for El Cap, Vanessa?
Just thank you for, for doing the job that you do. I know sometimes it's difficult to keep the, the monies and the numbers and the seniors, you know, where they need to go and, and what they need to do, so thank you guys so much for, for keeping such good track of our seniors.
Thank you very much.
I, I probably ask you this every year, but the folks sixty-five and over, are there any income limitations? This could be any, anybody sixty-five or over who resides in Lawrence County?
Absolutely. We jokingly say you can have a dollar or a million dollars. If you need us, we're here for you. Now, obviously, we don't have a whole lot of millionaires, but, um, but it's just a joke that we say.
Sure.
No income type here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. I'll take a motion on forty, uh, forty-three.
Send it.
Second, the motion is secondly for a discussion here and none question on the motion, Lawrence County, Vanessa, please call the board.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, thanks Vanessa.
Thank you all very much.
Uh, up next, we have our planning department, forty-four. Um, this is a project that, that we're looking to do, uh, with Ellport Borough for the completion of zoning ordinance. Alan, Becky, which one of you guys is, is taking, Alan? So what do we have, I'm glad that we're, we're, uh, we're, we have a smaller municipality here a little bit, there's a...
Right.
And I want to emphasize that these types of programs are available to every municipality, uh, in, in the county of Lawrence for anyone who wants to partner, um, with our, our planning department to, uh, to undertake them. So if you'd be able to give us an overview of what's going on?
Yeah, well, Ellport Borough is in the process of updating their zoning ordinance. Their council has actually written most of the ordinance, uh, they just, uh, need assistance in the areas and making sure that it's compliant with the Pennsylvania municipal plan.
What are the terms of the agreement, are we charging them?
Yes.
How much?
Five hundred dollars.
So dollars for five hundred dollars, they're getting, they're getting the standards, you are free, you're in full compliance with the Pennsylvania municipalities planning code. Um, certainly a worthwhile expenditure there and, and certainly decent discount from what you pay an attorney or, um, or a third-party consulting firm. Uh, so for the low, low price of five hundred dollars, we will provide your very own Alan Miller to you. And any, any good questions from colleagues here? Thank you for your work on this, and I'm sure we appreciate it, and I'm sure that all four appreciate it as well. I'll take a motion on forty-four.
Send it.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion here and none question on the motion? Uh, Vanessa, please call the board.
Commissioner Steel Vogel? Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um... Becky, are you here for these ones?
No.
Okay, I would like to take them.
Yeah, I was just, yeah, I was here just to provide support here for Alan. So, yeah, no, I was like, you know.
Um, these all, unless there's any objection, we'll take them all together.
Sure.
Uh, just because that's probably the easiest way to do it. Last week, we approved a number of American Rescue Plan Act allocations for various projects. Um, what we approved last week was the appropriation. It was not a, uh, a fiscal, it actually a contract contractual agreement with the entities to whom we're awarding funding. Um, this week, we're officially awarding funding to, um, Westminster College, two hundred and fifty thousand. Mahoney Township, two hundred and fifty thousand, Dewomans Borough, sixty thousand, and, uh, LCSS, El Cap, two hundred and seventy-six thousand one hundred and five dollars. Hold on, for the other projects, the broadband contracts already been entered into, and, um, the Elwood City Borough project is actually technically running through Lawrence County. Um, and so while we approved the money for Elwood City, the project itself is being administered by Lawrence County, so for that reason, we don't, we need to contract with ourselves to, to execute that plan of work. Um, and then our, our internal IT upgrades, um, will, will, they were internal IT upgrades. So, questions or comments? All these have been reviewed by the auditors, I think the auditors pulled the actual contracts together, all of them reviewed by the solicitors. Um, you know, it's, it's just on us now to approve, any questions or comments before? I'll take a motion on resolutions forty-five through forty-eight.
Send it.
Second, motion is secondly, any further discussion here and none question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the board.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, up next, we have a resolution for discussion, plus a letter of authorization, all related documents for mission critical partners or contact to facilitate the NG nine-one-one, um, service. Um, this is an initiative that's been in place actually now for a couple of years, um, transitioning to NG nine-one-one service from our, uh, our current systems. Um, and, uh, its contract will take place through, uh, it starts yesterday and, uh, will take place through, uh, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, this is through a nine-one-one center, and I believe funds here are being paid for out of our fifteen percent grant allowance from Pima, so this is not coming, I don't believe this is coming out of the general fund. Uh, but it modernizes our nine-one-one systems, um, and allows for more efficient, um, nine-one-one services. We all know how, that, that service is critical, um, to provide, uh, food to our, our residents. Questions or comments on this? I'll take a motion to approve forty-nine.
Send it.
Second, with, I do have a comment. Uh, I believe you both know this, but Mr. Strobel did plan to be here today. And last night, uh, we had a couple of unfortunate situations in the county
Yes.
that really, uh, required his attention. We obviously may know we had a shooting in, uh, the borough of Elwood City and a fire in Scott Township. And it did require Mr. Strobel's attention, um, and I think it probably took his time a good part of the evening. So he, his office called, asked, and again, maybe you know already, but normally he would have been here, but I, and he hopes that we understand why he can't, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Your motion is second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, question on the motion, Vanessa, please call the board.
Commissioner Steel Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogel?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, up next, we just have a transfer, and it's a large transfer, but there's a reason, forty-two thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars. As many of you know, the nine-one-one budget, from a budgetary perspective, is the bane of my existence. Uh, I, I, we get the actual amounts right, for the life of me, I can't get the accounts right. Um, and so this is transferring, um, I put all of our fifteen percent funding into a shared CPE account for the twenty-twenty-three fiscal year. Chad is separating the funds out from that shared CPE account into project-specific accounts as required by Pima. Um, again, I, the, the budget's so done on every other area, I cannot get nine-one-one hundred percent right. It's impossible for me to wrap my head around, but we're moving that money out of that shared CPE account into the, uh, the project-specific accounts. And this is all fifteen percent funding, it's not a general tax levy. Um, so I'll take a motion to approve that transfer.
Uh, before, if I could just comment, no, because it, a, a light bulb went off in the fog here. Uh, you know, through CCAP, uh, we actually vote on priorities that we want to speak to our legislators about in, at the Capitol, in Mount Hurstburg. And the nine-one-one system, the appropriations, uh, it sunsets January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. So that is one of the top priorities for CCAP is to, um, to be involved through our, our different counties, through the different systems that we have, to be involved with the legislators to try to come up with the systems, whether it, it continue the way that it is with increases i- in, in different areas or not. Maybe putting everything under one umbrella that, you know, it can be disseminated a bit better for budgeting purposes. I'm sure other counties go through the same thing. But that is, uh, one of the, the top priorities, because it, it does sunset next, uh, next January and, you know, you can't delay on that because you can't stop the nine-one-one system.
And that formula is so flawed that they're using right now, they use in order to comply, so for, for, for context, wherever you get your cell phone bill, I'm sure you guys see a tax on it. Um, Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania-specific tax, that goes to, to Pima, which then flows to the counties to provide nine-one-one services. Uh, and it's based on a formula that was, I think they came up with it in two thousand and fifteen. Um, I want to say it's fourteen or fifteen. The, the problem with the formula is that it was based on actual expenses incurred by counties in prior years. And so the problem with that is, you have some counties that constructed a nine-one-one center
Yes.
in prior years that cost, you know, potentially, I think ours costs, and you'd be able to give a better figure on it, maybe six, seven million dollars.
Yeah, at least.
Um, and there were some overages on that that I'm aware of. Um, but so, so we constructed our nine-one-one center after the formula was written. And so while Indiana County is the county I'll use as the example, um, they're receiving millions of dollars more than we are to fund their nine-one-one system. We're exactly the same size county.
Yes.
Um, but because the formula is based on prior year expenses, and they put their nine-one-one center in, as they were crafting the formula, they're getting a significant more dollars than us, who have the same population, but put our nine-one-one center in afterwards. So that formula needs fixed, uh, it would save, uh, our taxpayers' dollars if it were probably costing Indiana County taxpayers' dollars, but then again, we don't represent them.
Well, hence the, the, not the argument, but the fact that it, it needs to be worked on, because it's, you know, it's, it's not fair, and it's not going to be an easy thing as a representative to say, well, go ahead and pull those millions from Indiana or another county and share a little bit more with, uh, with Lawrence. Yeah, it, it's, it's, um, going to be very interesting to see how things, uh, move forward, so.
I think they're, I think they're one vote away from the last vote to change the formula. So I'm going to switch to the last minute. I remember Jeff, when he was still, he was telling me about it.
Okay.
But it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a big issue, and I'm glad that C cap's making it a priority.
Definitely.
Vanessa, who have you to motion?
I don't think, I think I spoke on a term before, I will motion.
Second, motion is second, any further discussion on the transfer? Hearing none, question of motion, all favorably, please sit up and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries. No warrants is on the table, four hundred dollars for the final action. Next, the commissioners' meeting will be held on Tuesday, February seventh, at ten AM in the commissioners' meeting room. There will be a Lawrence County opioid advisory board meeting. Follow that meeting on the seventh at twelve o'clock noon in this room. And there will be a planning commission meeting on Wednesday, February eighth, at twelve o'clock noon at the Bessemer Borough Building. The public cause?
If I may, I'm sorry.
Oh, sure, okay.
You had asked Sheri Knight her name. This is Sheri Knight, she is going to be our Elm Street liaison. So we're just trying to pay a little bit more attention on what's going on in our government, see how we can help you guys and how we can work together to better our community.
Absolutely, I'll note that the Elm Street project on the Lower East Side, I believe and correctly if I'm wrong, is one of two Elm Street designations in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, they just added a third one that I'm aware of and maybe a fourth, but that's still a great saying that little Newcastle, PA
Absolutely.
has been respected enough for them to give us that designation.
Absolutely, and we know that it is because of the hard work of individuals like you both that we receive that designation. So appreciate your efforts on Lower East Side, appreciate everything that you guys do for the community. Certainly happy to have you here, you're always, always welcome back.
Thank you, thank you.
Absolutely, okay, good.
Any additional comments, five of you aboard?
No.
All right, I will adjourn to Lawrence County Board of Ministers. Thanks for, well, Ken, don't forget your stealer jacket.
Yeah.